Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have everyone tonight. You may follow along on the screens, the agenda. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening, the first being Agenda Item 6.1. The first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Item 7.1 through 11.4. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There will be a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here.
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up this evening are the Spring A+ Award winners, and I'm going to ask Mr. Velardo to take over from here.
Thank you, President Davidson. The A+ Awards, to give you just a brief description, is a way, one of the ways, that we try to honor people in our district who do exceptional work day in, day out, and were nominated by their peers for this award, which I think, I think we would say really elevates it when the people you work with day in and day out say, "This person is above and beyond." So I am going to go to, I just get to be the spokesperson. This is from the board and from the administration. I'm going to go to the podium, in which I'll be inviting the nominees and the award winners to come and stand up there, and they'll share a little bit. But at this time, if I could have my fellow board members, they will form a line in front here with Dr. Kellogg and Ms. Marshall to greet the award winners after they get their awards. So if you'll be with us for a minute here. Sometimes this superintendent likes to jump the gun and embarrass me. Diane Fosselman, a city council member, was also a part of the process reading through the nominations and helping to select those who have won this award tonight because we have more nominees than we can give awards for, but we're just very excited. Thank you for coming out tonight. And let me say just one quick thing, it feels like a housekeeping thing, it's really not. Mrs. Davidson, would you hold up one of those awards from the base? Thank you. And what I just said to Mrs. Davidson was, is the key here. These awards, take a look at these, and take, you, when you, when you get them, share them with people. Well, don't share them, show them to other people. These awards were made at the Westerville North Shop. They, they did these, and so when you look at them up close, you will be quite impressed with what the students have done. And the other reason I'm highlighting this is, as you just saw, please don't lift it up from the top, lift it up from the base, or you will have two awards that you will be going home with. So lift it up from the bottom. Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. So, all this aside, I'd like to have Christine Ashbaugh come forward to present for Claudia Redd.
Hello. I'm honored to be here to recognize a very deserving individual and exceptional educator, Claudia Redd. Ms. Redd exemplifies the board's mission to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world we live in. She helps students rise to their potential academically, socially, and emotionally. She works diligently to help them reach their goals for growth and celebrates their accomplishments along the way. Ms. Redd is often the first person to greet the students at Ann Hurst Elementary as she stands on the red mat each morning. She has dedicated her career to providing quality education to our students with disabilities. Claudia sees the potential in all of our students. As she prepares to retire, I think it is most deserving to award Claudia for her continued dedication to the youth in our district. Congratulations.
Thank you.
She's holding it from the base? Do you? At this time, I'd like to invite forward Steve Massey to present to Mary Ellen Green.
Members of the board, Superintendent Kellogg, Treasurer Marshall, and honored guests, it is my honor to present to you Mary Ellen Green. Mary Ellen exemplifies the essence of the A+ Award. Through the years that I've worked with the Westerville City Schools, she continues to distinguish herself on an ongoing basis by working with students from the Best of Both Worlds program. The Westerville City Schools' mission statement, which is to prepare students to contribute to the competitive and changing world in which we live, is a direct reflection of the work and passion that Mary Ellen infuses into her position. The unique challenges presented and associated with working with this population lends itself to the student preparation for the world in which they will live and work. The social, academic, independent living, life, survival, and work skills, just to name a few, being taught by Mary Ellen and her peers, and I would be remiss without mentioning them, Andrea McDonough, Cass Lawson, Deb Barthol, Sylvia Plots, and Karen Thogmartin are essential for the success of these students and the program. Over the past four years, I've witnessed Mary Ellen go above and beyond with these students as she interacts with them on a daily basis, whether it comes to working with them one-on-one in group, such as filing, copying, organizing, et cetera, eating with them, teaching them proper etiquette, teaching social interaction with adults are just a part of the functions of these students. Words reflective of the district values include respect, inclusiveness, collaboration, and nurturing are all part of the experience that these students enjoy. If we're not people like Mary Ellen and the staff of the Best of Both Worlds, these students' experiences would not be as positive as they are today. They're now and would not be as prepared for the world had they not had Mary Ellen care for them. To further demonstrate her humbleness and passion, in an email that she sent to me after finding out of her selection, she stated she was honored, but more importantly, that the honor will highlight the program and let others know how cool the students are. The work that Mary Ellen and the staff of the Best Worlds perform reflects great credit upon them, the Westerville community, and the Westerville City Schools. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to invite forward Kristin Wright and Jules Rathge to present for Mary Fortman.
My name is Kristin Wright, and I am the proud music teacher at Alcott Elementary and the proud parent of two wonderful children in the district. But tonight, I'm here to tell you about my good friend and awesome music teacher, Mary Rebecca Fortman. We became friends quickly when she came to Westerville. Our philosophies closely aligned, and we shared the same sense of humor. I immediately came to admire her musical abilities, her mastery of the Kodai philosophy, and her incredibly positive and accepting outlook. Our time together in Westerville has allowed me the opportunity to see that Mary Rebecca is an outstanding teacher no matter the circumstances. She spent one year preparing to lose her job due to the threat of drastic budget cuts. This year, she has the challenge of traveling to not just two, but three schools. However, she is dedicated to providing her students with the most outstanding and thorough musical education despite whatever obstacle public education might be throwing in the way at the time. Mary Rebecca goes above and beyond by consistently providing Westerville students with focused and quality and inspiring teaching. The Westerville City School District is lucky to have such an amazing teacher to call its own, and it is my honor to call her my friend. I'm so pleased she's receiving this award.
My name is Jules Rathge, and I teach art at Hanby, Emerson, and Whittier. Thank you for inviting me to speak on behalf of Mary Rebecca. I would like to present her with an A+ Award for multiple reasons. I nominated her because she consistently goes above and beyond in her teaching. Working in three buildings, she inspires many students each and every day. She organizes multiple performances for students at both Hanby and Emerson, exposing her students to a variety of musical experiences and enriching their lives. She's worked with me, the art teacher, on lessons incorporating both music and visual art. During our collaborations, we've worked together to invite the community into our classrooms and performances. Many families come to enjoy the hard work our students have done on their performances in art. Mary Rebecca repeatedly gives up her lunchtime to work with students, inviting them into her classroom to work with her on their ukuleles and their recorders. She teaches multiple classes together at the same time while working on performances and to help classroom teachers when there might be an uncovered absence. She collaborates with classroom teachers to create meaningful lessons that align with their science, math, and social studies standards. She's a great colleague, and she genuinely cares about the staff at all of her buildings. She's a great colleague, and she's thoughtful, and she helps out those who need her. She checks in with the other special teachers to see if she can help in any way, and she acts as a mentor. She plans out the schedule, she collaborates with classroom teachers to preparing what is best for all of our students. Music education is such an important part of a child's education, and Mary Rebecca works hard to facilitate an inspiring music program for all of her students. It is for these reasons that I am proud to nominate Mary Rebecca Fortman for this award. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Victoria Haslett to come forward to present for Elizabeth Wolfgang.
I'd like to thank the Westerville City School Board for the opportunity to present Elizabeth Wolfgang this evening. Elizabeth has served as Wilder Elementary School Counselor for the past five years. In addition to her classroom lessons, small group sessions, and supporting individual student intervention plans, Elizabeth participates on the Wilder Way PBIS team as well as the building safety team, and facilitates two student leadership groups, Trail Blazers and the Playground Activity Leaders. Elizabeth leads staff trainings and also serves as a mentor to new counselors in the school district. It is the manner in which Elizabeth approaches her role that designates her as an A+ educator. She possesses an authentic, compassionate, optimistic nature that positively influences our school community on a daily basis. Elizabeth is professional, purposeful, and focused in both her interactions with people and in carrying through with her work tasks. She is a trusted confidant to all members of her school community. She advocates for the well-being of children and their families as well as staff members. Elizabeth serves as an exemplary model to her peers in balancing the demands of her professional role with her own personal and family responsibilities, including being the mother of a truly adorable two-year-old. Wilder Elementary School is a healthier community in which to grow, learn, and work because of the dedication of Elizabeth Wolfgang.
At this time, I'd like to invite forward Malia Stock, Jill Huck, Kathy Kozinski, so it's a gang. Is the whole gang coming?
No. I'm speaking for the gang.
You're representing the gang to present to Jamie Kyre. 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 It was a basketball name. Oh, is that right?
Thank you for inviting me here to speak tonight on behalf of Jamie Kyre. Jamie Kyre goes above and beyond her role as a study hall monitor on a daily basis. She works with students to help them achieve academic success by making herself aware of test dates, to encourage good study habits, by checking in with students on homework completion and project deadlines, and by reaching out to the school counselors and teachers in her building to ask how she can best support the students in her study hall. Jamie is truly an exemplary staff member at Janowa Middle School, and we're very lucky to have her.
Well done. At this time, I'd like to invite up Jean Trimble, Jordi Villanova to present for Ernest Clinksdale.
Hello, I'm Jean Trimble, and I'm the librarian at Walnut Springs. I nominated Mr. Clinkscale for the A+ Award because every day he inspires me to be my best. No matter what is happening in our building, he always tries to keep a positive attitude and respectful demeanor. Through his words and actions, it is obvious he truly cares, not only about the students, but also about the teachers and staff in the building. In addition, he is committed to bringing exciting opportunities to our students to help showcase their many talents, such as the Black History Month celebration and the Poetry Slam. He always encourages creativity and innovative thinking. He is always looking for the best in everyone, and every day I feel privileged to be his colleague. Congratulations, Mr. C. You are so deserving of this award.
I'm Jordi Villanova, the band director at Walnut Springs Middle School. It was my great pleasure to nominate Mr. Ernest Clinkscale for the A+ Award. Mr. C., as the kids call him, is a great role model in our building. Outside of the wonderful things he does on a daily basis in our building, he has instituted a wonderful new annual event at Walnut Springs. The Black History Month Celebration is an event that brings everyone in the building together. Mr. Clinkscale worked to bring departments together to have an art show, student performances, the school jazz band, and even a jazz group from the local university. A visiting artist was brought in, and there was a catered meal for everyone. It was a beautiful evening with everyone supporting each other in a wonderfully nurturing environment that was led by Mr. C. himself. This kind of thing does not exist in a vacuum. This event is successful because Ernest Clinkscale brought everyone together, and we bought in because he and our administrative team set the stage long in advance. Congratulations, Mr. C.
Members of the Board of Education, thank you so much for another great opportunity to recognize the work that our people are doing at Westerville Central as well as in the district. Thank you again, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, for your support as well. Let me introduce you to Mr. Brad Adams. We were talking before tonight's event, and this is Mr. Adams' 43rd year in education. So just to put that in perspective, I'm a social studies guy. That means he started when Ford was president. Borrowing from Dr. Kellogg's presentation last year. So let that sink in for a second. Here he is, 43 years later, still going strong, still helping everybody at Central in many different ways. Mr. Adams came to Central five years ago, and he was only supposed to be there for a couple of weeks to fill in. Five years later, here he is. And as I was sitting there, I know Miss Beck is giving me remarks, but I'm kind of going off script here a little bit, but there's a, there's a lot of things out there, like Twitter challenges. So I came up with a Mr. Adams Twitter Challenge. So here's how it starts. You start the day in the food service line, helping serve breakfast to our kids if they come in, and you greet the kids, and you say hello to them every day. You check their temperature, and you say, "How you doing?" If you have a bad, if somebody's having a bad day, Mr. Adams knows right away, and he's on it. From there, you kind of get yourself going with helping his fellow administrators, like keeping even keel. He is the wise counsel in our meetings and always has the best thing to say and keep us on the straight and narrow. You're going to develop the master schedule for everybody next year. 107 teachers, about 1,900 students, give or take, and make sure that thing's up and running. From there, you're going to take a little bit of a break during lunch and help our four lunches go, go well. So you're going to make sure you walk and make sure kids are doing okay there. After that, you're going to visit some classrooms and make sure that the teachers are being supported. If you need something, if I need something or teachers need something, you're going to call the district office and make sure it happens without anybody else knowing. You're going to make sure it happens. And then after school, you might find yourself in the woodshop making those shelves that aren't going to come in time so that the teacher can get what they need before, you know, before they actually need it. On top of that, you're going to take some time out to tutor kids in biology. You're going to take some time out to talk to our EL teachers and our EL students to make sure that they're supported. Again, that's just the Mr. Adams Twitter Challenge. I hope that you have an opportunity to see him in action. He's awesome. So in conclusion, Mr. Adams' contributions to the central learning community are invaluable, as you can see. He is the example, the quintessential servant leader in our building. From developing everything we just talked about to what we see going on behind the scenes on a daily basis, Mr. Adams is the ultimate professional educator, and I am so proud to have been able to work with him for these two years. So, Mr. Adams.
At this time, I'd like to invite forward Wes Elefritz, Kim Mullahan, Jill Beck to present for Lisa DeSalin.
Good evening. Members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, Mrs. Marshall, and esteemed guests, thank you for this opportunity as we honor Lisa tonight. Lisa DeSalin is a vital piece of the Westerville North High School community. Lisa handles the day-to-day tasks as our principal's lead administrative assistant. However, she provides assistance for so much more in our building. She assists the athletic department as our building's ticket manager, handling all of our finances and organizing our event, and ticket workers in extremely efficient manner. Our athletic department also hosts numerous additional tournament contests each year, and these only take place with the assistance and hard work of Lisa DeSalin.
Lisa also organizes graduation items, diplomas, presenters, programs, annually ensuring our graduation ceremony runs seamlessly for our seniors, diploma presenters, and administration. Lisa also coordinates AP testing finances with one of our assistant principals as well, and collects and communicates, or communicates school fees for every North student. Even the flowers at North appreciate Lisa, as she can often be seen pushing a cart through the commons to ensure that all of them are watered. I consider Lisa to be a dear friend and amazing mentor. She has also been a huge support of the North Theater Department. She even allowed us to cast her dog in one of our musicals. Thank you, Lisa, for all that you do.
When I think of Lisa, I think of the perfect example of an administrative assistant. Often, building secretaries and support staff are the forgotten warriors, and I feel that Lisa exemplifies our district values each and every day to ensure that students and staff in her building are nurtured, included, and respected. Now, I like to rhyme things. Okay. Endless phone calls she will take, endless deadlines she will make, answering questions all day long, and making sure nothing goes wrong. Her organization is beyond compare, and she knows exactly what to find and where. Her smile reaches far and near and tells all that they are welcome here at Westerville North High School. This is just a small example of how Lisa goes above and beyond. Lisa DeSalin is truly an A+ employee.
At this time, I'd like to invite forward Michael Henze to present for Alyssa Maisy.
Members of the Board of Education, Dr. Kellogg, Treasurer Marshall, thank you for another fantastic opportunity to recognize an A+ educator. Alyssa Maisy brings a tremendously large heart to Westerville South every day. As an intervention specialist, Alyssa allow, never allows the challenges of her students' daily lives get in the way of their successes. She is always positive, always reliable. What separates Alyssa is her routine in finding things that are strengths of her students and using their individual strengths to develop individualized plans for them to solve their own problems. Then she checks in with them afterwards and coaches as needed. Alyssa always checks in, she's always kind, and she is always ready to listen and is always ready to help. For countless students at Westerville South, she is a steadfast adult advocate who will never let them down. For that reason, Alyssa is deserving of the A+ Award. I want to read two sections of student nominations because they're wonderful. Here's one. "I cannot express enough gratitude for what Ms. Maisy has done for me in the past, currently, and now, and what she will do in the future for me." These are students' words. "She helps me with my schoolwork and talks with me about personal stuff like family, work, and friends. When she talks with me, it helps me realize what I need to do and gives me the tools to grow. I used to, and I still hate school, but she is the reason why I come. She makes me believe that I can pass and that there is hope for me even when I do not think there is. She is such an amazing and inspiring person, so many people look up to her and they always will. She has helped me with so much personal and school stuff that I've, and I've already said thank you to her for what she has done. She is very positive, and she will change other students' lives like she has changed mine." And then there's a senior who wrote, "I have known Ms. Maisy since I was a sophomore, and she has always been a big help. She was not in class specifically for me, but always did her best to help all of the students. Last year was my junior year, and it was not the best. I lost my dad one week into school, and I, and I did not have a very good attitude towards school or a good outlook on life in general. I came to school every day, and I was miserable. I went to her class every day, and during study hall, I would tell her that I'm not going to do my work, and I wasn't going to do anything, and that she, and she let me do that for a few days. However, she got me back on track. I was so far behind, and she was..." so far behind, and she was the one who helped me catch up on all of my schoolwork. She is the one who I could turn to, sometimes just to talk, because that's what I needed, and she knew that." And that is a senior at Westerville South. Congratulations, Alyssa Maisy.
At this time, I would like to invite forward Journey Lane to present for Ann Tuller.
I just want to say, thank you for going out your way. For making Sharon bundled up. For helping me tie my shoe. Or ask me about my day. There's so many things that you do. The best part of school is riding the bus with you.
We're going to be voting for that kid someday. You watch, you mark my words. We're going to be voting for that. If I may, just briefly, the A-plus awards, this is what I heard. Sometimes they travel to two and three different buildings. The A-plus award winners, they work with those who are in the best of both worlds, lifting them up, so they can contribute to the world. They are in elementary, middle, and they are in high school. They're counselors, they're teachers, they're administrators, they're intervention specialists, they're secretaries. They are up front, and they're visible, and they are behind the scenes, and they are indispensable. Let us be very clear. To take the time to do this is not only an honor for us, but it is a privilege. And the thing that I think stands out the most is when I talked to some of you before this, to a person, they said, "I'm just doing my work. Other people are doing it too." And we believe that's what makes this district the best district in the state, and more. So from the Board, from the administration, from the parents, from the community, and can I say, from some of those lives, that you will have impacted far beyond the years that you will ever know, we want to say thank you. It is an honor to have you as a part of this district. Would you all thank them one more time? As we always say, you are welcome to stay for the rest of the board meeting, or you may exit for some pictures and some enjoyment in the hallway. Thank you.
Thinking, okay, how quickly can I get this thing to the cleaners?
You said that people didn't have to stay.
Okay. Okay, moving on in the agenda. 4.1, approved minutes of the regular Board of Education meeting held April 8, 2019, and the work session held April 15, 2019. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any reports this evening, nor do we have any public comments. So that takes us on to financials. 7.1, a resolution to approve purchases in accordance with ORC 5705.41, and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
President Davidson, members of the Board, this is a then-and-now purchase order that needs approval in order for us to pay it, because it's over $3,000. We actually had a purchase order in place for this specific purchase, but because of the timing, we ended up closing that. So the new purch, the old purchase order has been referenced in the new purchase order, but it's still technically a then-and-now, so.
Okay. Any questions?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.2, amend resolution accepting amounts and rates for the tax year 2018, collection year 2019, as determined by the Budget Commission, and authorizing the necessary tax levies, and certifying them to the county auditor. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Yeah, so this is basically correcting the rates. So the year before, we would have done an estimate of what the tax rates would be for 2018. Now that we have the actual rates, this is just updating them for collection year 2019. The county auditor requires this every year.
Any comments, questions?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.3, amend the fiscal year 2019 annual appropriations. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Yes, so the only change for the amendment for the annual appropriations resolution is we're adding $1.5 million to the general fund. This is to cover the design costs for the possible new elementary school, and the renovations to Ann Hurst Elementary. That's part of the district's facilities master plan, that the Board talked about at the last work session.
Any questions here, comments?
I do want to mention, we do have a reimbursement resolution in place that should the district pass a bond issue in the future, we would reimburse these expenditures back to the general fund.
Okay.
Thank you for pointing that out. It's helpful.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 7.4, approve the financial report and investments for February and March of 2019. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
President Davidson, members of the Board, this month, we're going over two months. We only had one board meeting during the month of March, so this month, we're going over both February and March. For February 2019 month end, for the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of $142 million. Year-to-date expenditures were $111.5 million, and the unencumbered fund balance was $137.1 million. For all funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $228.2 million, year-to-date expenditures of $154.5 million, and an unencumbered fund balance of $201.6 million. That's the month of February. Now the month ending March 31st, for the general fund, we had year-to-date receipts of $167.2 million, year-to-date expenditures of $130.5 million, and an unencumbered fund balance of $144.6 million. All funds, we had year-to-date receipts of $259.5 million, year-to-date expenditures of $177.5 million, and an unencumbered fund balance of $211.2 million. Now, I'll take any questions. Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the personnel consent agenda. I would like to ask for a motion for 8.1 through 8.10.
To be taken together, you mean?
Correct.
So moved. Second.
Dr. Hopkins?
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the Board, Dr. Kellogg, Ms. Marshall, I'd like to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights included in tonight's consent agenda are as follows. We have two retirements. Ms. Elizabeth, who I understand prefers to go by Betty, Vada, is retiring from her custodial position at Robert Frost Elementary School. That will become effective June 1. She has been with the district for 11 years. We also have Mr. Greg V. Brants, who is also retiring from his post as Executive Director of Communications and Technology, and that will become effective August 1. He has been with Westerville Schools for 13 of his total 30 years of service and education. We also have a total of 16 resignations from various classified, classified substitute and teaching positions. We have some one-time payments for staff who have supported the Journalism Course of Student Study Collaboration, some work in our Universal Design for Learning, or UDL, programs, and refining and finalizing the Spanish Course of Study. We also have the reemployment of various classified administrator contracts, and then the employment of individuals in a number of classified administrator, classified substitute, and classified supplemental health positions. Quite a consent agenda tonight. We also have the employment of a licensed teacher, home instruction positions, and a number of pupil activity programs. I would like to, with the Board's permission, go ahead and address two of the additions for contractual status changes, as well as the introduction of a new licensed administrator. So if I could ask Mr. David Bennett to please stand up. Mr. David Bennett will serve as Point Views Elementary Principal next year. Previously, Mr. Bennett is going to be joining us from Chillicothe City Schools, where he currently serves as an elementary school principal. His previous administrative experiences also include serving as an elementary principal in Indianapolis Public Schools, as well as Albuquerque Public Schools. David also brings 19 years of classroom teaching experience, primarily in vocal music and general music. He holds a Bachelor of Music Education from the Ohio State University, a Master's of Music from Illinois State University, and a Master of Educational Leadership from the University of Dayton. I'd also like to note that David is joined by his wife tonight, Dionne. So thank you for coming tonight, and welcome. Next, I'm pleased to introduce a familiar face, Genoa's Middle School's current Assistant Principal, Mr. Chris Pointer. Mr. Pointer will be the next principal at Emerson and Longfellow Elementary Schools. Mr. Pointer has been with our district since 2007. He was a Health and Fiscal Education teacher at Westerville North High School for five years, and an ESL teacher at Hawthorne Elementary for five years before taking his current role as Assistant Principal at Genoa Middle School. He holds his Bachelor of Science in Health and Fiscal Education from Wright State University, his Master's in the Art of Teaching from Mary Grove College, his Master's of Education in Educational Leadership and Administration from Ohio Dominican University, and his special education license endorsements come from Otterby University. We'd also like to recognize, also joining us tonight is his wife Allison and their son, Jack, in the back of the room. So thank you for all coming this evening. And finally, I'm pleased to announce that Huber Ridge Assistant Principal Andrew Hoffman will become Whittier's next principal. Mr. Hoffman has been with us since 2017, and previously served as an elementary principal in Big Walnut Local Schools. He brings nine years of educational leadership experience to the role, and he holds his Master's of Arts and Educational Administration, as well as his Bachelor of Science in Teacher Education from the Ohio State University. Thank you for joining us tonight, Mr. Hoffman. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board that you may have.
I think we also have Brandy, who's going to be the South Media Specialist.
Yeah, the Media Specialist at South High School. Thank you for recognizing that as well. Thank you.
I miss anybody?
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 9.1, final reading for Middle School Advanced Courses of Study. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Oh, second.
Whichever.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We do not have any new business this evening. We have some standing business. 11.1, donations. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We are always so grateful for our donations, so thank you very much.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestabaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 11.2, a resolution to authorize continued membership in the Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2019-2020 school year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Reeves, do you want to, I mean, talk to us about that?
Members of the Board, this is an annual thing that is required by the Ohio High School Athletic Association for Athletic Association for districts to affirm their continued membership with the association. We are one of the few states in the nation that our state association does not charge districts to be a part. The benefits for us is that all of our athletic teams can participate in the OHSA state, district, and regional tournaments, and we also are covered under their catastrophic injury insurance.
Great. Thank you so much. You're in? Okay.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
11.3, first, I'm going to ask Ms. Marshall to read this resolution, and then I'm going to ask for a motion.
Okay, the resolution is to support the Fair School Funding Plan proposed by the Cup Patterson Work Group. Whereas the state of Ohio is in process of establishing the biennial budget for fiscal years 2020 and '21, and whereas the Westerville City School District has a vested interest in the outcome of the biennial budget as it relates to school funding, and whereas the House Representatives, Robert Cup and John Patterson, have created a work group, the Cup Patterson Work Group, made up of superintendents and treasurers, to develop a school funding formula that is transparent, understandable, easy to modify to reflect changes in educational policy and practices, and whereas the Cup Patterson Work Group developed the Fair School Funding Plan, which allocates funding to districts based on variables related to the whole student, that includes social and emotional well-being, and whereas the Fair School Funding Plan recommends to fund school districts based on where students are educated, and eliminates the transfer of local tax dollars to charter schools, and whereas the Westerville City School District is annually underfunded by approximately $12 million due to artificial caps in the current formula, and the Fair School Funding Plan recommends that these artificial caps be eliminated, and whereas the Westerville City School District appreciates the work that has been done by the Cup Patterson Work Group to address obvious issues in the current school funding plan. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Westerville City School District Board of Education offers its support to the Cup Patterson Work Group and the Fair School Funding Plan as proposed, and be it further resolved, the Westerville City School District Board of Education supports implementing a school funding plan that does not violate the Ohio Constitution, provides a thorough and efficient education to all students, and is fair to all taxpayers.
Thank you. May I have a motion?
So moved. So seconded.
And then I'm going to ask if anyone has comments, but I'd like to start with Dr. Nestor Baker, because she is the one that brought up this idea.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And, you know, I always have comments on these kind of things. I am very pleased that the board is sending this resolution forward, assuming it passes. What is at stake here, as we look at school funding, is a phenomenally important component of the education of our children, and it is also a phenomenally important component of how we approach the Ohio Constitution's insistence on the common school model in Ohio. That goes for this resolution and the next resolution as well. When we look at Cup Patterson, we are talking about what so many of us have looked for, waited for, worked for, for many, many years, a fair, reasonable system of funding public education with significant transparency that removes a lot of the barriers that have negatively impacted this school district and so many other school districts across the state. The school funding formula that we have now is actually only applied to a very tiny number of school districts. The rest of us suffer through things like the cap that Ms. Marshall was talking about, suffer through significant underfunding, watch our funds pulled away to fund charters, and we hurt because of it. And it sends us into fiscal difficulties that are not of our making, but that we must always resolve. If we can work together through Cup Patterson, through the changes that will, by necessity, through the legislative process, work through that work group's recommendations as well, if we can work together, finally, as state policymakers, as local policymakers, as local educators, as state educators, the way the system was supposed to work, we will all benefit. And not just financially, but we will benefit in ways that are currently untold and currently unachievable.
I just, real briefly, I'll tell you why I'm going to vote for this. It's contained in the resolution. Whereas the Westerville City School District is annually underfunded by $12 million due to artificial caps, and this is attempting to get rid of those caps. We just honored a whole bunch of people that could use some of those resources. Secondly, we're going to vote that it's transparent, understandable, easy to modify, and reflect changes in educational policy and practices. Parentheses, constitutional, end parentheses. This board works very hard, in a nonpartisan way, to make statements to the legislature. And this is a statement.
I think I'll be voting in favor, because I believe that it's important for us, as a board, to add our voice to the ongoing conversation. I also want to underscore the importance of having a funding system for all schools in the state of Ohio that is in compliance with the Ohio Constitution. That's significantly important, and goes a long way towards us being able to provide, as it says in this resolution, a thorough and efficient education for all of our students.
I concur, of course, with my colleagues. And thank you, Ms. Marshall, for watching and collaborating with area treasurers, and watching the legislator, and using your voice. We appreciate it very much. So, thank you. And we're ready whenever you are.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
11.4, again, I'm going to ask Dr. Kellogg to read this one, and then we'll take a motion, and we can have some discussion or make comments.
Thank you, President Davidson. I'm going to read to you the resolution that we've put together regarding, Resolution to repeal Ohio's school takeover law. For those who are interested in where this is, this is House Bill 70. The actual reference is to the Academic Distress Commission. So, whereas the Westerville City School District's Board of Education wholeheartedly believes that public schools are essential to our country's common good, ensuring an educated citizenry, and a healthy democracy by providing equal opportunities to learn and succeed for all the nation's children, and whereas the board strongly views local school districts as being the bedrock of public education, that House Bill 70 threatens Ohio's local public school governance by gutting the covenant of shared educational responsibility held by the community, licensed and classified staff, and locally elected leaders. And whereas House Bill 70 may have bypassed Article 6, Section 3 of the Ohio Constitution, and has not been successful in addressing the persistent needs where it has been implemented, and whereas Ohio citizens never agree to any initiative to give the state authority to take over struggling school, public school districts, and whereas the original purpose of House Bill 70, which sought only to enhance local control and authority by establishing community learning centers to provide services for students and their families, and the community at large, was turned inside out and vitally altered, and whereas the amended version created a mechanism to strip locally-elected school boards of all power, and shifted complete authority to unelected chief executive officers who answer not to the students, parents, voters, or taxpayers who rely on that school district, but to an appointed commission with no ties to the community. And whereas, being able to cast a ballot for school board members who have no power is meaningless and dilutes the rights of Ohio voters to an unconstitutional degree, completely eviscerating local governance of their own school systems. And whereas the process of amending House Bill 70 was intentionally orchestrated to minimize negative pushback from the public following months of behind-the-scenes work that played out within a few hours on one single day, June 24th, 2015, when it passed out of the Senate Education Committee, passed out of the Senate, sent to the House, and then passed out of the House. Therefore, be it resolved, that the Westerville City Schools Board of Education fervently supports the complete and immediate repeal of House Bill 70, as well as replacement of the policy with an evidence-based turnaround model that restores local control and improves student outcomes.
Thank you. Yep, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I get to talk first on this one, too. As you can tell by the language that Dr. Kellogg read in this resolution, this bill, House Bill 20, which is law now, threatens who and what public education is in the state of Ohio, in a way that no other bill has done in living memory. As you heard Dr. Kellogg say, as this bill was created with remarkable rapidity across a 24-hour period, it was passed through the legislative system, as it was designed behind closed doors. It was done in such a way that removed the citizenry's right to comment and right to be self-governed. As it stands now, when a district is taken over under the tenants of HB 70, as was read by Dr. Kellogg, authority for running that district and making all the decisions is placed in the hands of one person. There is a commission that is appointed as well, typically not local people, people who are brought in from outside, and this CEO has full authority, without the authority that comes from shared collaborative governance and shared collaborative administration and a community-wide system of schooling. What we have here, and what we expect to have in this state, is a locally governed school district, where the decisions are made close to home by people who are vested in what happens in this school district, where local governance and local control help us ensure that our community is strong, just as the lives of the children who graduate from our school district are strong. HB 70 gutted that. When it passed, I thought it was a joke. I thought it was one of those things that you see on Facebook that you know isn't true and just got clickbait. But it was real. And so many people said, "Well, they're just taking over the poor districts that are bad, and somebody's got to fix them." Fixing districts that are in trouble isn't about gutting their locality, isn't about gutting their communities, isn't about gutting public governance. It is about dealing with all of the issues that go into struggling schools and struggling school systems. That's how we fix schools. There is a movement afoot to get rid of this legislation. That's important, and it's something that we all need to be supportive of. And it's also, though incredibly important, that we watch to see, and that our voices are heard, on what comes next. Because we need to be vigilant if we're going to protect the very system that gives us strength.
Just briefly, again, it's contained, for me, I'll be voting for it, it's contained in the resolution. Whereas House Bill 70 has not been successful. It has not been successful where it's been implemented. If you're in a hole, stop digging. And once again, I say to you that this board is insistent on attacking these issues in a nonpartisan way. And secondly, if you vote for a board of education, but you take away all of their powers, you have, in fact, taken away the vote. And we won't stand for that.
I agree.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Oh, yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
11.5, a motion to amend the 2019-2020 school calendar. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Mr. Reeves, you're back.
I am back. Thank you, President Davidson. In the last several board meetings, we've, as we finalized our work with our middle school design team, we've brought several items before the board to consider as we make adjustments to the middle school program and the middle school experience. The final one, in our first phase of implementation, is the request to have the first day of school be attended by sixth-grade students only, pushing the seventh and eighth-grade students to the next day. We are in the process of finalizing a really, really robust plan that will take this transition from elementary into middle school, and do it in a way where we can completely focus on the sixth graders and getting them off to a good start. And we would ask the board to consider approving that resolution.
Any questions or comments? I have one. I would like to see us do this for the ninth graders next year also. I know that these transition years are really tough. You and I discussed that a little bit briefly, so I'm wondering if we have support from Dr. Kellogg. We briefly talked about that in the past, and...
Certainly something we can sit down and look at and talk about, and its implications, talk with the high school principals, and there's a little bit, some of the same transition issues. I think there's some other issues related to that, but certainly something we can sit down and talk with folks and see if they're willing to support that.
Is that something that we could amend tonight? Are you comfortable with that, or would you rather?
For next school year?
Yes.
I would be uncomfortable at this point with that coming forward, but that's your choice to do, since we haven't talked to anyone about it. But your call.
Any thoughts for you guys? Just batting it back and forth, having...
As regards the sixth-grade piece, I am really eager to see this implemented. And I also am delighted by the parent component that is within it. That is an area that it's too easy to get away from, particularly as the kids get older. So, I'm very eager to hear that. As regards the ninth grade, I would like to see the discussions, but I would also like to see that brought back. So, in other words, as there has been discussion with the middle school building level people, and talking about how that could work, and what that would mean, and what changes needed to happen to make that work, I'd like to see a similar discussion held with our high school folks, with the idea that it needs to happen, the discussion needs to happen very quickly. If you're looking at next year, then you would need to, Dr. Kellogg, talk to those people, get their sense of what it would do, what it wouldn't do, how it might work, how it might not work, and get back with us very quickly about what they see, as regards whether that's implementable in August.
And I don't know if you guys are aware, but I know South did one last year, where they actually brought the kids to the school before the start. And I know they're planning on doing another one this year, and they're trying to fundraise for transportation. So, that's where my thought came from. Just, I would like it for all the high schools. I think it's important. So, I'd be comfortable, if you want to take it back and talk about it. I really would like to push and try to do it next year, if possible. I understand there's obstacles and discussions to have, but I think it would be good for our kids.
I'd also be interested in that. I heard very good things about South's orientation as well. So, I think that would be great for next year, if we can make it a priority to move those discussions along.
This is just for sixth grade.
Get that one off the table first.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
We do not have any board, or any public comments this evening. And up next is board comments. Who would like to go?
I'll go.
Okay.
President Davidson, members of the board, I would like to just take this opportunity, first of all, to say what a privilege and joy it has been... first of all, to say what a privilege and joy it has been to serve with you since my appointment about six months ago. It has really been, I believe, a privilege and an honor to be able to serve the students, the parents, our staff, and the community in this capacity. And so having said that, it is my intention to run for the seat that comes up in, well, this upcoming November. So I wanted you all to know first.
Yes. As the school year comes to an end and in light of Vaughn's announcement, I have also been reflecting on my experience as a member of the Board of Education and thinking about the upcoming election cycle. I have been really impressed by the work and dedication of our many teachers, staff, and administrators, as well as my fellow board members, of course. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is that I've had some recent changes in work and family commitments, so after some soul-searching and many lengthy conversations with my family, I have decided that I'm not going to run for reelection this fall. Instead, I'm going to support both Vaughn Bell and Jen Altman, who is going to be running for election for school board, and I hope that you will also consider supporting the two of them as the election draws near. I would like to share a couple things about Jen Altman. I believe that she'd be an amazing addition to the board. She's grown up in Westerville. She has three children in the district at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school right now. It's quite an accomplishment. And of course, she's a graduate from Westerville North High School. She's began volunteering in the district in 2009, and she was the co-founder and board officer for Westerville Partners in Education. She also co-chaired the 2012 school levy campaign for the district, and she's served on some district-wide committees, including strategic planning, elementary boundary realignment, never an easy topic, elementary programming administrative, and she currently serves as the World Heritage Director at the Ohio History Connection and works tirelessly for the community and also the district. So I think that she would be a great addition to the board, and I am definitely going to support her, as well as Vaughn Bell, who's been an incredible thoughtful addition to the board. I really appreciate your thoughts and service since your appointment.
Anybody else?
I said enough tonight.
But you said good stuff.
I said good stuff. So I should say bad stuff now?
It's not up for a vote. If we were up for a vote, I would vote against Mrs. Cotter not running again. You understand that's a double negative. I would, okay, you get that. It has been just wonderful to serve with you and understand that life changes, and so you made that choice, and I thank you for what you've done and just wish you well. And I know you'll be involved in the district, serving and a lot of volunteers you do. My brother Vaughn, I'm excited to have you continue on as the board to kind of sanctify this side of the room. But...
You've got the saints and the sinners.
Sorry. Sorry. I'll get in trouble for that one later. Dr. Kellogg likes that. Oh, I'm on the good side. Sheep and goats. But anyway, I'm sorry. Sorry, I'm going down the road here. Just wonderful. These two have been very strong board members. Excited about that. And I, just for what it's worth to me, have seen Jen Altman serve in capacities all over this district, and just fully excited about her potential serving on the board as well and my encouragement. I don't know if we're even supposed to say these kind of things from the day is here, but I've already said it, so. Very excited about that possibility. And I think just really want to thank our new folks for coming into the district. Excited to have you when we're finished here. Come on up and say hello to us. And we're just, we believe you're coming into a really good district, and all districts say that, and that's true. But we believe it's a really good honoring district. And as far as the resolutions, I'll stop here in a second. As far as the resolutions, I'm just going to say it again. I'm going to say this plainly as I can. This board works very hard in a nonpartisan way to address issues that affect education and our students and our staff. And as long as I am a part of this, I'm not speaking for us, but I think I am, as long as we are a part of this, that's the way we will address these issues. So thank you for being here with us tonight. And I'd say if anybody has any questions about any of those resolutions, they certainly could talk to any one of us. Thank you. Thank you.
No, thank you. And I'm also very thankful and grateful that we made a motion to adopt those resolutions. I think it's really important. So thank you. As far as Jerry stepping down and not running, makes me very sad. You make us better. You ask great questions, and you don't always agree with us, which is something I think we all like, and it makes you uncomfortable. But we do. I think that's important. So I will definitely miss you. I'm super excited. Vaughn, you're throwing your hat in the ring, and you know, I, you, you know, so grateful to have you here. You've been a wonderful addition, and I can't wait to work with you more because who would say no to you, right? And as far as Jen Altman, I've known Jen a long time. I find it ironic that Vaughn and Jen and I kind of got started in this on the realignment committee and active in this district and have loved working together with her, and she is very valuable, not just to our school district, but to our community, and I love that she looks at all sides, and I will absolutely support her. So thank you. Anything else? Anyone else? Okay. Which takes us to dates, times, and locations of next meeting. The next board meeting, 14.1, the board will hold a special meeting on Monday, April 29, 2019, at Westerville North High School to recognize the JEM Award winners. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, May 6, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center, Eastwind Drive, Westerville, Ohio. And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Velarde?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nesterbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. We adjourn.
7:20.
What time is the JEM meeting?